Interviews every time. If it's only to explain the role to them, okay? I know you're an elder.
I'll finish off and one thing I would say. Now, if I take on board what everybody has said, what we must be careful of is though, whatever decision we make this evening is not for expedience reasons. Yes, at the moment, we don't seem to be attracting very many people. That doesn't mean that we're in a case in the future. Whatever decision we make this evening, if it goes into changing standing orders, there will be a change. And then whatever happens in the future, well, we're going to go forward. We're going to have to live with it one way. So I would say please don't make decisions based purely on expedience.
Oh, absolutely.
So, do we have a proposal, Anne?
I would propose that we have an interview. It doesn't have to be a big round of interview.
Let's take it once.
For four people to interview every single time.
So your proposal is that prospective councillors are interviewed.
It doesn't have to be a lot of background.
Second for that, all those in favour?
It's more to...
Can we, Anne, please?
Excuse me.
If you're voting, can you put it out? Six, four. Against the decision, one, two. Abstentions, one. So you now have a challenge.
I have this one too, John. I was like...
Yes?
Excuse me.
Right, we now then need to select an interview panel. As we now decide we're going to interview, we now need an interview panel.
We've got some interviewing people.
We've got two people.
We're willing to never do that.
Did everybody know that before they did the last bit?
No.
Problem.
Did you see what you were about to say?
I think Jim might have had a bearing. But just while we've gone through that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Currently, standing orders requires an interview panel of at least four. Do we want to keep a panel of four people interviewing?
We have to follow the standing order, don't we?
Yeah.
Keep that the same then? Okay. So who is going to be on the interview panel? I'm happy to be on it.
I propose me.
You propose me.
Me.
Propose yourself. Like you're nominated yourself.
I'm nominated, sorry, nominated me. Stop coming at me, everybody's getting at me tonight and I do feel that all right now.
Please.
Well, no, if you're striking me again, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll be along like I said when you're second then.
What do you even do then do?
Yes, could you do it?
I'll second that.
Which is yours?
Okay, that's, that's...
Why didn't you say Joyce here, not me?
Well, she's over.
David, tell me something. He wouldn't just have gone on.
Oh, you're in it. Everybody's watching.
So you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Propose myself, I think I'm...
No.
Okay. Three. Is the third person now? And we're going to second that?
Awesome.
Okay. It's three.
This person works.
Can we please just...
I'll take that one. I'm sorry, try to, maybe try to...
Can we go on the interview panel?
Okay, I'll put someone else in the next one if I can't do it.
It will then relax you.
Yes. But in future, I'd like to...
Do you want to go on the interview panel, Joyce?
No, I'm not, oh, sorry.
Would you like to be on the interview panel?
I have been on it several times, several years, yes, I would.
Second to that.
Okay, so the interview panel is myself, Anne, Joyce and Martin.
Sorry, Chair, can I also then come back to what Sally Anne just said? I remember Sally Anne's also on the reserve for future because we have had the situation before, haven't we? Yeah. So if we're going to have four, four people minimum, it could be that in a month's time we find ourselves in the same position. So I propose Sally Anne as well as a reserve.
Sorry, I don't know, I've forgotten the new councillor. Because of Sally Anne saying that she might not be able to do it, it's not... Can we nominate the new councillor as a reserve? Because we could cause a problem. No, but if somebody has to drop out, which is what happened before, we need a safeguard.
You've got five, you've got, you've got five minutes.
Yeah, I know, you don't need anything.
I know that Sally Anne's put her name in reserve, but she can't do this, Mark, because we're being...
Obviously, if we need, we can work out it.
Do we have a proposal for what we've got there?
Yeah, we second Sally Anne.
Well, Sally Anne, go ahead, sell forward. I'll go second, I'll go second what Sally Anne says is reserved.
Right, okay, we've got Michael and Martin, Joyce and Sally Anne.
That's the four.
Yeah.
All right, all right. On Sally Anne's reserve.
On Sally Anne's, yeah, actually.
Yeah.
So can we vote on that?
Yes.
Right, generalising twelve, this is closing advice and solutions aside whether it's all part of continuation or cancellation of the current agreement. We're going to be paying them, we pay £100 a month. Given in context, we recently paid us less of £80 an hour, which again is cheap. So £100 a month, and that is all we pay. Regardless of the amount of time and advice we get from them, for some reason, they're happy to do it, carry on £100 a month.
The proposal.
I think let's, let's...
Yeah, I'm happy to continue, but I would like to know if the starting committee would actually want to continue it, given the... Because it was a temporary thing when it was first set up. If it's, I don't want to be paying something we don't need at this stage, but if you feel that it's needed, then I support it.
I would say, Chair, that given that we have a new employee coming on board, that if the clerk needs advice as well, which you can get if I say this personally, as well as the starting committee, so that has a £100 extra money. So that would be a good, a bigger idea.
So propose my paper, simply by me, all those in favour? You know, most. Thank you very much. I'll give a view of the appendix, eh? This paper, you want to read on this?
Yes. It's one I quite like. Items three, four and ten, the references. I think they make better use of space. It's an emotive topic because the residents are not very keen on it, but quite often during the day you'll go around various of these roads and you'll see empty, yeah, and the public can't park. We want people coming into Oakham and I think that would attract them. So I would hope we would support those. The others seem to make sense. Most of them are just old spaces, no major cycles.
Well, I'd like to get that, any other comments, Anne?
Yeah, I would echo what Peter said now, I'd go one step further. So yes, I support all of them, but also when we reply back to what the county council applaud them for the initiative on two, which encouraging brought the water residents presumably would probably want tickets to visit town. So I think we should acknowledge what the county council would letter to the effect of that that initiative is well received. Good idea.
Yes, please.
I can make a comment, it may not fall within the remit of what a paper is, and I can do it as a resident myself. But I'll just point out, can OTC request that the last parking bay on Church Street with junction of Station Road be obliterated for lack of a better expression, because it's causing congestion right on the corner.
It's not on this paper.
It's not on the paper, that's why I say, you want me to do it as a resident or you want me to mention it to you?
We can't do it now, Joyce, it's not...
You can mention it. Okay, I'll do it my... I'll read it there where...
Any other comments on this?
I echo what councillor Lewis said about there being anything to get the millions of visitors from Rockwater to come and visit towns as well. These are help, maybe they have to pay for town apartments at Rockwater, so if they're going to get free in the town, I don't know how it's managed, but it seems a good idea. I'm sure they support that.
The proposal is then that we, our view is that all of these are acceptable. And as a caveat, we add a letter to RCC. Got it, we've lost all the...
Certainly item two.
They all proposed that?
Seconded.
Seconded. David, all those in favour? And Sally Anne, thank you very much. Next one is another topic here, and this is...
Yes, not really prepared, but a quick look at it, some of the forms, it seemed to be sold in. It's real to do that. I thought last time we wanted to put it in the form twelve there before we looked at it, so I'll go back to that.
This is what I came to say.
What, what, what part is?
A bit of that, so we just want to know, can we know whether, we just want to say whether or not, yeah, there, does the townhouse or meet, support, meet, support this proposal, yes or no? And then ordinarily, that's what we asked you to say.
So it's, it's for us, us to say whether or not we support the proposal.
And then also as well...
And if we're prepared to...
Contribute.
The rest of it, RCC will... That's the RCC.
RCC will complete the form, Peter, they're just, this is done by RCC.
Yes, Davey.
Yeah, I think this is, this is the same as we had at the last meeting, and unfortunately we made a complete little hash of what we were being asked for, because we're already being consulted on whether we agree with this, not whether we want restrictions or anything else we did last time. Reading that someone was nearly killed or injured, I do think this is a good idea and I think we should support it. And same as we did last time, no financial support, but we support the residents and their application. The only problem is, of course, unless you've got a traffic warning there, people will just ignore it.
Yes.
But hopefully, you know, we do, we do what we can and we should support this. So I will move that we support this and give no financial...
My husband extends our complaint, I don't have to do this complaint, but people have been parking on the pavement and people with mobility suitors or disabled people, whoever, can't feel their mood.
All right.
And that people parked on the pavement, so they haven't been able to get past. Now, this is an extension of that law, I'm wondering if the yellow lines and extent are enough.
Sally Anne?
As I live in Kilbend, I experience this problem every day, going past this park where the cars are parked. It is a really bad design, because it goes, it's like a round chicane. That's the correct word. And the near misses that happen there, not necessarily with children, but with cars as well, it happens nearly three or four times a day at least. And the children do live in the houses over the road, and when they're little children, what do they do? They just run out. So although I can't vote on this, I would support getting these... Just if they're as long as the park, that would be more than far enough. Because there are residents that are parking on there and they should be using their own drives and they're not.
Okay, thank you. Just put the board up. So the clerk, the clerk is giving permission for that. And last number, Davey, what's it called?
No, I was going to just make a comment, anything that makes it safe for the young people who are crossing there is good. And if anybody asks and wants to do it, I'll accept the proposals that we support this, but we don't support it financially.
I, I, I would support anything which advocates safety in the town, because that's the kind of town council we are. I think there's possibly a time now where the town council should also consider putting its hand in his pocket and actually sort of saying, not only do we support it, but we made prevention, originally actually give some financial support, very, very talking a couple of hundred pounds. If not for this, could we have them budgeted this year? But to consider looking budgeting and some kind of highway budget for this, because this is becoming more common, this is the county council, we look for cash. And whereas I don't like to give our money away, this would send a message out, that not only do we support it, but we're putting that money where it matters. So I think we don't have to get congestion because we're not a great council, Chair.
Anything else?
That's for the future, is that for the future?
Could be now, could be now.
Okay, so I think, Dave, you want to make your proposal on this point?
I've put the proposal in a second then.
Can you just read out, because we haven't, we haven't finished debating, you're keeping the same...
Same grounds of justice.
So can you just read the proposal now?
The recent council support that proposal and seconded the financial contribution.
So the proposal is that we support without financial... Was that seconded?
By Martin.
Martin, all those in favour?
I would make a camp proposal.
Hang on.
If I may, Chair, I'll just make a camp proposal, but yes, it is exactly, but in relation to the financial amount, is that the town council offers £500 towards costs.
I'll second that.
That's the... If my second will agree, I would draw my proposal.
You agree to...
No, I won't agree, because I believe that, I like what councillor Lewis says slightly, but I think it's a bit, shouldn't be done tonight. And I think it should be reserved for things like, for instance, if Patmas College would come and say that we need a pan of a crossing, but I believe the council in the past has supported things we're just talking about, it's a pain here.
Stop, 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 all the proposals, okay?
I'm not paying...
Okay, not just people's names.
We start putting money aside for parking, it could be the thin end of the wedge. And, you know, if we do it once, we set a precedent and we find we need to do it in the future. I think it should only be in very special cases, and so I wouldn't support the amendment.
Yes.
If this is happening, somebody's already been injured, we've had somebody who lives in the area, who's said categorically it could happen at any time. It's too late after it's happened, not when the child...
Very minor injury.
That was that time, I'm sorry. And I think that, you know, that's good, that that child was probably very lucky. But I think that in the future, if no one else kills, we would look at ourselves and say, we could be forced to stop that.
Joyce?
I have to say that we, we don't want to set a precedent on this at the moment, and certainly not a major reaction, because we have no idea what's going to happen with this one-way system, two-way system, no system. They may then stop asking as well, periwalk crossings and the highest rate, all sorts of things. We haven't budgeted for this, please, just let's not have a major reaction on this, otherwise we might open in the floodgates.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've raised that. So the first proposal we take is a camp proposal, which we support the scheme and that we provide £500 towards the cost. That was, was that seconded?
Yeah.
Simple Anne, all those in favour? Games?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, and the second proposal by David was that we accept, we support the scheme, but we do not make any contribution. Was that seconded by Martin, all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
The Games? Abstentions? What is it?
I'm saying abstentions.
I didn't see it happening.
You really have had a deep for me to that.
I'm trying to see.
Are you going to do a paper for Prince Christmas?
Can we please not help any cross talk here, sorry? Generalising fifteen, this is the Christmas tree, and this is two... Yeah, two, a more contract light... Four, well, two things, a more contracts, a light with tree and more price expenditure of £1700. I'm watching the latest. Yes, Martin?
I am a bit surprised that councillors have been working again on this project. And once again, it's been forced to council before it should be, because like me, I'm aware, but when I did it, it happened to me. It happened to the two councillors who are no longer at the council. I understand we don't want to get the Christmas tree wrong, but people don't give quotes until September onwards for the tree. And lights, in my opinion, are just far too expensive. And I, and I know we've changed standing orders that say that if we want to get quotes, we can get them rather than that we should. But I, I think it should be deferred to the next meeting to give the opportunity for the councillor who was looking into quotes and waiting for the responses to actually bring them to council. So my proposal is that it be deferred.
I will correct councillor Brooks, nobody forced this to the council, I'm going to send the client. I actually spoke to Sally Anne Adams beforehand and said, I'm looking at bringing it. Sally Anne said, well, I'm still waiting for some information to come through. That information wasn't forthcoming, so I was going to hold back. And then after speaking with the clerk, the clerk was the one that said, well, let's give the council the opportunity to decide. So you're being given an opportunity, you're not being forced. If the council choose to defer it, please defer it, but do not misrepresent or misinterpret or put slurs on councillors. I'm a citizen, take your comments.
Thank you. Any else? Joyce?
I would like to say that we are running very, very, very late with this, and I would not like to see it deferred any longer. Otherwise, we should have no tree. This is, this is usually done three months ago or three months at least.
It's been delayed.
It's been done a lot earlier than this and we cannot afford the time to go out and find more quotes. We've had the opportunity.
Yes, we tend to be giving mixed messages on this. I go back to Adam's traffic lights, and that was the one red one, wasn't it, the getting the quotes? So I would ask, is it difficult to get quotes now? Can we afford to wait a month? Or as councillor Widdis says, are we taking a big risk? I don't have enough information at the moment. You know, we seem to think perhaps where we're going is expensive, so maybe another month give us a chance to make a good saving or maybe not, so.
Let's Sally Anne say first.
I'd like to support this because, because we've had problems in the last couple of years, perhaps not last year, but years previously. I'm beginning to get concerned that we're not getting the quotes through that we're asking for.
Yeah.
And I want to just go with the lights and perhaps research for next year when they start giving out the quotes in September, ready for next year, if that makes sense. But to go with lights and we know we've got a tree.
Yeah.
All right, Joyce?
If you're happy, we can come back to it. The points raised by Peter, Sally Anne went out to an organisation who kept trying to quote, but they just keep for some reason. Martin, you had, they tackled the same problem, you went out to an organisation, they didn't, they were forthcoming. I didn't approach lights specifically, I actually approached three different organisations, one of which was lights. So one of them never bothered replying and the other one came back and said, I don't have any trees. So, yeah, it is difficult and maybe we should be starting earlier. And of course, don't forget, next year, this, this year, two seventeen is the last year of light being on town. We're perhaps looking at the whole Christmas offering in the early part of next year. I'll give a footnote after the decision's made, by the way.
So, but just as some of them, it would appear correctly, if I'm wrong, it would appear that you are becoming concerned that you are not getting quotes from every vast one. Christmas is not going to get deferred because I don't have trees in that age. We know that lights can, will provide a tree and we've got a price for that. So what we need to consider is, is it, do we place the order with lights to make sure we've got a tree and a reasonable tree that's there? Or do we take a chance and hope that we're going to get quotes elsewhere for a tree and hope that we're not too late if we get, we do get those prices? Would that be a fair summation?
Yeah, I'd like to propose the candidates.
I've got a proposal on town, I thought you proposed it in the county, right?
Are you? Martin, you did that, are you?
I would throw that proposal.
If you prefer, not if you prefer, you prefer to defer.
Okay, please, that's...
We want to do it.
Okay, so the proposal is that we go with lights.
So we propose to find Sally Anne, I...
Well, I'm proposing myself, but I'm Sally Anne, sorry. I wasn't immediately proposing it, but we go with, Chair, I'm proposing that we go with lights and that council authorises expenditure of £1700 for paper. Go on, second, Sally Anne, second, is there, all those in favour? Against?
Abstentions? I'm very against that, it's a very...
The footnote is, I did want to make this comment before you voted, because then we're going to be putting the pressure on you. I did check the line, I thought it was the latest week order a tree and he said it had to be ordered before September first. That is the lights, my line, the contact that they do, okay?
So we just... Okay, thank you for that.
I'm going to hope this ends.
Okay, Jen, last week, please stop cross talking. Generalising sixteen, this is the ground contract appendix eight. Your last Alison, if you can, can leave on this, please.
We... The... We need contract out tender on the 18th May with a closing date up to 13th June. And the advert went in, a couple of papers, it went on all the notice boards, it went in our window and also on our website. Two companies approached me, I sent the details to the other company, but they never came back. So hence why we have the tentacle for this, that we do our contract now. Which is there, and the paper's white. They do... So it's not true, I think people know by the conditions of our parts and stuff, what a good job that they do.
Okay. Okay, Joyce?
I was quick on behalf of the paper. At a minute's notice, they will come out. The Royal Albert of Britain, Esther Young, am I right, is that his name? And they're there on the spot. I would propose that we go along with this long and high contract. Why is it that we only get long contract? Is it because people don't want to work with us, I wonder? But I would propose that we go along with this contract. They are fantastic.
Martin?
I have no dispute that when they go around cutting your grass and kicking the lips of monks today, that they don't do a good job. But what I'm concerned about is that our previous clerk did mention about the volume of contract money wise, that we were to be complying with European laws with tendering, and I'm not cleared up on what that was. But, but there was also, there was, there was, there was also, um, a website where you could actually advertise, rather than sticking it in the rotten times, a government website, I believe, which we could find out from Rotten County Council, where these things can be advertised. The my other thing is the fact that, you know, this has been over a year. And we only have one tender. When it came to council before, I think there were three or four, why were those people not invited? And I, and I, I, to me, it's not a small thing. It's a very large contract that we would have to put a notice up saying we've gone into. And I'm just concerned that we could be seen as not following so rigidly as we should, the tendering process. And, um, so for that reason, I won't be supporting this this evening.
Thank you, you want to come back?
I looked up at the reports from the previous clerk, three, well, the four years previous, and it actually did go out to tender. And it was recommended, um, it was by standard orders, because it was under a certain amount of money, and it was voted and resolved by council, so it did actually go out to come the last time.
I can answer your question about, um, we don't give no jet notice, either it's well below the threshold of the EU.
Sorry.
We don't, Martin made reference to the EU regulations. It's, I believe currently we would need to go to an object notice if it's, I think it's either £86,000 or £107,000.
I don't know, actually, we just get bits and pieces, so it's hard to know.
Can I propose something?
Well, there's just, any, any further debates? Okay, Joyce, you want to vote?
Look, we're at this one.
Okay, my second to that? Second to, all those in favour? The games? Thank you very much, next one then is search for point two.
Um, second, uh, it's actually saying, uh, it was, um, the advert was from the 18th of May to the 30th of June. It went into the Rotten Times and the. That's Alveda Mercury, it went on all the notice boards, it was in the office window, and it was on our website. Um, and again, I only received one interest, uh, which is from the contractor who does our cleaning now.
And we should comment on that? Yes, Martin?
Yeah, um, again, I can't support this because it's, it, it's not going absolutely, I consider proper tender. We should have invited people, there are dozens of cleaning companies within Rotten, Leicester, Shire and that. And I object to some of the additional information, you know, we won Loewer the year because we paid for it probably five years ago, when it was new, you know, was the last time we in fact put information on that. We, we, we got to the situation where we stopped it because the clerk pointed out to the council, we didn't get gold, so they just wrote to them and said, must have made a mistake. And they said, yes, we did, and we got a gold. Um, it, it is not, um, always clean to a high standard. Um, it, it has been recently, and that's probably because some people have complained, and I observed to see that a little while back, that they weren't keeping to the four cleans. What, what the issue is that I don't believe anybody inspects their work. And I appreciate they want to stay with us and they have a good relationship, they say. But that's just because basically they were having materials paid for by the council that we not recharged to them. Um, and to be fair, this contract to them is very cheap because they're paying someone to do this, and then they're expected to buy all the supplies on top of that. I mean, if you were to look at that as a payment for somebody who's going every day of the week, it's not a lot of money. So I think they've underpriced themselves, and that's, you know, I. And that, but I, I feel that people could have been invited for this, and it could have been advertised. But I don't know why we're not using trade magazines to advertise. Like, you know, how many company directors are reading the rotten times? I'm not knocking the paper, but the circulation is very low. And I don't think there's an effort in a year to do proper tendering.
Okay.
This seems too comfortable.
Well, I'll answer first, I'll just want to ask one question. First of all, we are observing public tender processes. Secondly, if we were to invite individual companies, write to companies and invite them to tender, we would be writing more.
No, that is not true, we can invite.
Um, the second one was, you wanted to come in.
Um, the, um, looking back at some of the old papers that, that was resolved by council three or three and a bit years ago. Um, a report was done by the previous clerk, which he actually said that because the, it, because the cleaning products needed to be purchased from the provider of the, of the equipment, um, it was resolved by council, but even though it was in the original contract, we then paid for their, for cleaning products. And I didn't know that until I looked at the report over a week ago.
Yes.
So council resolved the council provider.
Yeah, because it had to be specifically for the machines and from the provider.
Okay, Joyce?
If anyone heard my, my talks, after the talks on privilege, you will know that I'm interested in toilets. I visit the toilet. I visit the to- the toilets once a month.
Sorry.
Right, I refrained. I actually visit the public toilets to put in the notices at least once a month. And Alison makes me, it's more than once a month. I inspect the ladies' toilet and, uh, and the, uh, baby changer room and the gentleman. Actually, I don't go into the gentleman's toilet, my gentleman checks those toilets. They are checked, I have found nothing wrong with them in how many years I've been doing the notice boards now. Uh, so I suggest that, um, whoever, I mean, I know him as Jimmy. Uh, he does an excellent job. He's in there more often than that. He also, he also, when I, when I go into the notice board, that'll be blocked. So let's just get it right. Whenever we've asked for, um, an extra length of opening hours, either for trumps in the park or anything else that we put on, he's always there, ready to help. And.
Thank you.
And.
I'm sorry.
And also, he's always there at the end to see that it is locked up. And that's why we have, uh, a cleaning, that's another, you see, I know all this because those toilets were built the time I've been on the council. There was a great debate as whether we should have turnstiles and whether we could get plans going on the turnstiles. It's all right, uh, if they, what, what we came up with was having them cleaned regularly so they could be inspected for value, isn't it, written out?
I was, I was going to say, um, if they, they said something proposed, we would contact the AEX really as per.
Second, that, all those in favour?
Yes, one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, sorry.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Games? Abstention? Twenty? Eighteen, statement for the council, appendix J. Any observations, comments, questions? First, um, what's proposed, second one?
Both, yeah.
Seconded, all those in favour?
Who's seconded?
David, David. All those in favour? Oh, sorry. Games? Abstention?
Right, can I take this? Uh, for point two, the visitors to the current account and for point one, to the secretary of camp, it's certainly something else to camp. Do we have any proposals?
Can I ask whose signature is at the moment? Anybody?
I'm trying to think. No, sorry, I'm, he's a signature.
I'm one, I'm one.
So we need two sig- two signatures, two signatures for the current account.
Hi, David.
David's one, that's the second one. And.
Favour.
Okay, I propose then David and Adam, second that. Mark will second it, all those in favour? Anonymous? And now we need one signature for Cambridge Building, so I say.
I thought we were doing that.
No, one for the Cambridge. Yeah.
Sure.
We need one for that. No, I think I propose Adam.
Not seconded.
All those in favour? Anonymous, some others. Wotten Branch of the LRAL secret point, two members have represented to serve on Wotten Branch.
Well, I believe they're in the, that's through the SL, I think actually councillor Brooks might, is promoting once as well.
There were three of us present at the last meeting, and it was a bit, bit odd because they hadn't met in two years. Um, but they do want under their new chairman, is how Rotten County Council of Dorpen Brown should actually resurrect it and actually give some assistance to parish council. But any members can go along, but they had to have these appointed people to vote. So as open town council at the last, um, meeting, we had to sit with our arms crossed and not vote on anything when they were making, um, major decisions. Um, so it's a good idea to have two people, but from what I can see, it's obviously the meetings are not going to be made.
It's like a cut as well.
Yeah, so it's going to be somebody who's going to be able to get there, um.
I would.
Peter?
I would.
Yes, you do, I said for your members for that.
All right, thank you.
I propose to Mr Henry.
How's that?
Hey. There, you've got the chair.
Who's the one at the moment, chairman?
Nobody.
Those seconded for that?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, all those in favour? Anonymous? Number one, I propose, please, Tom? Seconded it? All those in favour? Yes?
Do seconded it, yes.
Are you voting?
No, I'm not, I think it's already been agreed.
You can have another one.
You don't have another one.
Did you want to, Joyce? No, you wanted, I.
Let's just go back to Peter, but, but, all those in favour of things, we got them.
Anonymous.
Are you voting for, are you voting, I voted for, I had my hand up for four.
But now you're against, aren't you now?
No, four.
Why are you forcing it?
The games?
I'm trying to sort this out.
We probably should have asked.
The games? Abstention?
Yes. Thank you, Lord, thank you, Sharon.
Sharon, can I just ask, was there anybody else? I think that's the problem, we should have asked in general if there was anybody else. That's where we have the problem.
Can I just say, every member is allowed to attend, um, which is, there were no voting rights, so every member in this room can attend.
I'm very, I'm very.
We can't be in Sweden. I like the, that's amazing.
I was thinking that we do that afterwards.
There are women.
There are girls, sorry, I forgot.
Gender item twenty-one, that's the point two, new members, frank, you see?